Good morning. This many of the Blair County Board of Commissioners has called to order. We'll begin with a moment of solid reflection, after which we'll stand for the Fledge of Allegiance to the flag. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Burke's been detained and is going to be joining us shortly. We're going to go ahead, and Nicole, you will go first.
I know Chris Frederickson from the 911 Center is joining us by phone. Could the other person joining us by phone let us know that you are your name? It is star four to unmute when you're participating by phone. I'm not sure who that is. Go ahead. We'll probably get both joined from the beginning.
Okay, now that will be good. Under item five, you see the schedule of upcoming meetings. Move to item six, and that will be asking for the approval of the draft minutes from the board meetings of July 11th.
Recording has started.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Webster will make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Isn't in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved, and move on to item seven, and public comment, and invite anyone who wishes to share public comment to do so at this time. Hearing them. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Webster.
Thank you. I don't know if you're all aware of this, but July is Dairy Month, and we have a lot of dairy farms here in Blair County. But what's really cool is that the Pennsylvania tourism website, Visit PA, has a special promotion for an ice cream scooper. It's called the Ice Cream Trail. You, if you go to Six Creameries and buy ice cream, you get 100 points at each one. I have no idea where the 100 came up with, because you have to get 600 points. Six would be sufficient, but whatever. Anyway, if you go to these, you get some sort of a receipt or something that you then submit, and you'll get an ice cream scoop from the state at the end of that, once you have gotten 600 points. But what's really cool about this is that Blair County is the home of two of the dairies that are involved in this. One is Richie's, and the other is Stocks. Those are both out in the code. But you can get two other ones that are also fairly close by. In Hambria County, there's Vale Wood, and in Center County, there's Penn State's Burkey Creamery. So it should be really easy to get four, and then you just have to go out looking for the other two. But I hope that everybody has an ice cream scooper at the end of the month. How fun.
No, I'd rather have the ice cream than the scoop.
We have to get the ice cream, get the scoop.
I'd use the scoop. I just need the ice cream. Commissioner Burke.
I don't have anything.
I don't either, so we'll proceed on with the consent agenda. Paul.
Thank you. Today's consent agenda for your consideration is Resolution Number 336. It's the payment of four warrantless as outlined in your agenda in item A. That does include payments to the McCarroll's Preferred Services in the amount of $1,268. Ratification of total payroll for the check dated July 14th, 2023, in the total amount of $834,474.90. It's a revised budget transfer and a budget transfer in items C and D respectively. It's the Treasurer's Office requesting approval to close the county's first National Bank Capital Reserve Fund Savings Account Number 2011, and requesting to repurpose the county's existing first as the P-Chip Reserve Account Fund, and more details eventually to come with transferring money into that account. Resignations and a status change in items F and G respectively.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Webster will make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I'm an aye with an abstention to the McCarroll's Preferred Services case.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved with the abstention as noted, and we'll move on to staff reports and special business, and we'll begin with Blair Drug and Alcohol, and Judy and Amanda are here with us today for a couple of items. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for your time today, Commissioners. We appreciate it. On the agenda today, the first item is our annual contract with the county as a single county authority. When we were moved out of the county into an independent model for SEAs, this contract was developed, so there's a renewal yearly of just the transfer of funds that come through the county to us and for some of the grants that we hope support, such as the DUI Sobriety Checkpoint Grant and the IPCC, Pennsylvania Commission on Climate Divisal, the CIP grants. So that gives us the ability to facilitate those transfers of funds.
I do have a question. Under 4F, one of the items is the children's first indigent participant reimbursement, and I'm kind of familiar with that from the attorney side and practicing. But could you kind of give the background on how that came to be in your contract? Because it seems a little incongruent with your normal services.
Actually, it's prevention. It is a family training. It was developed back when Judge Capriva was here. Gosh, it's been going on for, well, I'm at right now, I was hired in '97, and it was in place right around that time. And so the curriculum has changed over time, but it was developed to help families who are going through a divorce situation to recognize the impact of that divorce on their children. And so before custody is provided or agreement is done with it, they are to go through this training that really focuses on the child and not utilizing that child as a weapon in the divorce, and to keep that out of impacting any kind of trauma to that child in relationship to the trauma they're already feeling through the separation of the family. So that's how it got started, and it is a prevention activity that we've been contracted. Well, it was through my office that we contracted with the prevention staff at that time through Altoona Hospital. And then when we went into the independent model for the SCA, that prevention was brought in with us. And at that time, that was moved back over, it was moved in to us also, but we support that prevention model for the children.
And so that particular piece of funding, though, would be, normally, parents pay for that as part of their process, but it's for those who can't afford to pay.
Exactly. There is a scholarship that's set up through that. I'm not sure how it's worked on that side, but those that can't pay, there is that transfer of funding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
No, I, again, we are always grateful for our partnership with BDAC, who has served as such a valuable resource for the county. So we'll take that for business.
And the second item is a request for funding through the opioid settlement funds. I provided a lot of material to the Commissioners around a kind of status of what's going on. So we'll take these individually if you'd like, and then if you have questions, then we can discuss at that point. One of the things that we've seen and what we know nationally, the more we understand about trauma and impacted trauma, especially on substance use disorders, it really does need to be addressed early on and when it's identified. And for our students especially, those students have a myriad of behaviors that the schools are seeing at this point with our youth. And so what we need to do, and why it's important that the schools are involved, is because we know that their success for their schooling can be impacted by trauma. And we do have a system in place in Blair County where we have mental health treatment providers, we have mental health liaisons, we have drug and alcohol treatment providers, and we have drug and alcohol preventionists in the school right now. But what we're trying to do is expand the toolbox of materials that we have available to start focusing in on some of the trauma issues. Under the Appendix E, prevention programming is allowed as part of an expense under the opioid settlement monies. And what we're seeing, one of the things we did provide in the package to you was some of our own data from PACE, and I'm not Pennsylvania Youth Survey. We've been doing the Pennsylvania Youth Survey probably since back 2005, 2004. I'm not sure exactly when it started. It used to be, look, here's looking at U2000, of course, came and went. And so new surveys were developed, and the state of Pennsylvania does it every other year. We are blessed in our community because all of our the year, so sixth, eighth, 10th, and 12th are surveyed. And we're actually able to watch these cohorts over time, what's happening within each of those grades. But what you'll see under the PACE data, what we really were starting to show is this uptick in children's feelings of feeling inadequate, depressed most days, not feeling worthy. And I'm not sure if you've looked at any of those stats that I provided. For example, in 2021, we are above most of the state averages in Blair County among our youth. Feeling that they are a failure. For example, all school ages, we're seeing that a little over 27% of the youth are feeling this way in our schools. Then it does break it down individually by school. So the first curriculum that we're looking at is called SSET. S E, yeah, S S E T. And what it is, is about a 10-week curriculum that really focuses in on some of the trauma, because these are some of the behaviors you're going to see based on trauma. And trauma is different for everybody. Our first childhood experiences are processed individually. Where two children could be exposed to the same kind of trauma, they will process that trauma differently. And that trauma comes out in some of their behaviors and their ability to flourish. So this curriculum, what has shown is that it does, for those that have mild, it has a mild impact on it. But for those that are having those severe trauma issues, which we're identifying through our Student Assistance Program, again, this is in cooperation with a program that's been in place since the 90s, where kids can be identified at risk due to failure in their school academics, and they're identified by the team and then moved up into interventions that the parents have to agree to allow them to be involved in. This is not outside of parent control. Parents have control over whether their child is involved. But what we can do then is we have another tool in our toolbox of curriculums. Right now, we have about eight to nine evidence-based curriculums we use through Blair County Drug and Alcohol. And so this is another piece that we can offer. So this is a 10-week curriculum, and there will be pre- and post-test done. The ongoing implementation, this money that we're asking for today is really just to buy the curriculum and get the training. Because in a lot of evidence-based models, they require you to implement with fidelity, and so you have to be trained in it. So we would be bringing the trainers in. We would be opening it up, not just for our preventionists and our LIT's DNA liaisons. We would open it up to the mental health liaisons, and we would open it up to any teachers in the school districts that may want it. We can train up to about 20 people. This way, we have it fairly, I am so sorry, can I shut that off? I forgot to shut. So this is just for the curriculum. The ongoing would happen through the mental health budget. If the mental health liaisons want to utilize it, that would come out of the mental health budget, which they are already being paid to be in the schools and run these groups. And it would come through my budget to the ongoing implementation. So we would do pre- and post-test. In our side, we do, and I would, I would hope we would require that on the liaison side, that they do pre- and post. We put all this information into a system that we report to the state of Pennsylvania, Department of Drugs and Alcohol Program. So data will be collected on these groups when we do it. So we can feed data back to you as required by the opioid settlement monies. I'm trying to think. I mean, what we are seeing, and the numbers have gone up since, of course, COVID. You know, that was a significant experience for children, that to be isolated in a way, and even in for a full school year, not having the experience that they've had previous years in their education, to be isolated and now working virtually. So those children, we may be seeing some of the impact of that. But also, what we're seeing is a lot of things going on that are out of our control nationally, and even locally in our experience this past year with Altoona High School getting shut down because there was a risk of a shooter. Think about that trauma. Even though that that did not come through, they were experiencing that environment in that moment. Families were experiencing that. So we know that these have impacts. So that's the first curriculum we're looking at. Do you have any questions on reason? Oh, there was one other reason we did select SSET. Community Care, our managed care company, just received a $1.5 million grant from Pennsylvania Commission on Climate Divisal that is directly focusing on youth trauma in the therapy realm, in the clinical setting. And we have two of our drug and alcohol providers who are in the school being trained on the trauma. This SSET is that other piece of the multi-tiered system approach to addressing trauma in a school system. So SSET is the non-clinical piece. So they have the clinical piece, which is called CBITS. And now SSET is the secondary, non-clinical, that provides skills and a place for children to commit and discuss and share and learn techniques to address that trauma.
We had the opportunity at our last BDAC Advisory Board meeting to have a pretty extensive review of those statistics, and they are sobering. Things are really, as you said, they're repressing, and it is a concern, and I think this could be a good effort in order to to at least try to arrest the trend. That essentially chance maybe intervene a little earlier, which would be helpful. And mentioning the other grant with Community Care, our Community Care obviously, where our health choices. So again, that plays into the town's toolbox.
I think that addressed my, the question I was going to have, which was, I noticed, and I had a little bit of concern about kind of that phrase, that it's forceful systems that don't have access to school-based clinicians. But I think what you said was because of the Community Care Grant, there will be clinicians as well. So we can kind of look at this from both sides and
Absolutely.
Be more holistic and no pressure. That's good to hear.
Yeah, it actually is part of the tiered system to have a trauma-informed school system.
Glad to see a program like this. I think that there's always been issues of trauma for people, for kids, and it's always just, for years and years, it was just swept under the rug, and it's been more noticeable in the last, I don't know, 10, 20 years maybe. Though it's great to have these programs to try to help. So there'll be 20 people that'll be trained.
Up to 20 people can be trained, yes.
And they'll be able to, now, as they retire or leave, then you'll want to be retraining more people.
Yeah, and we're going to be checking in on that to see, once we've been implementing it, can we be a trainer of trainers locally? So there would be some sustainability things that we want to look at. If not, then we may have to go back to them to ask them. And that is some of the things with an evidence-based program. We have no control over is how they decide to allow, you know, maybe they're just to be trainers and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there any question on the budget? Because I do have, like, I know this will be the first contract you're doing for it. Can I give a suggestion about, right now, I would probably put a maximum in the contract for the amount that I'm asking for, but require me to send invoices that actually show, because I don't know what the, I have to pay for their flight. I have to pay for per diem, maybe a car to get them to and from the airport, that kind of thing. So I have a placeholder amount. But if I don't spend that amount, I'm not going to be wanting that amount. So it may be best just to put a placeholder in the contract of a maximum, no, 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 with my budget, and then I can provide invoices that shows that we spent it on those things.
Change the wording.
I'm not sure how you were thinking about budgeting.
No, it's, it's fine. So what we're, what we're doing today is you are just allocating that amount of money, and then we'll work together, Nathan and I with Judy will work together on some sort of a grant agreement that allows us to funnel money, opioid settlement money, for the correct purposes, for whatever you designate them for. And that, that next item will come to the meeting, and that will be where the maximum will benefit. But I think it's fine. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just giving that suggestion. I know, I know this is just for approval for consideration of allocating this, but there is a contracting side to it then, that I wanted to give a suggestion for.
You could put maximum amount if you wanted to for Thursday. I could change that.
And you have a second.
Yeah, the second one is what we've been providing, and some of this has to do with our workforce. We are seeing real strains on the workforce in the behavioral health field. And so even having people available for treatment in our schools for mental health and drug and alcohol issues, but also, you know, just within our liaisons. But what we saw is, and I have in my data, we've been serving over 200 children that are children who have, parents who may have a substance use disorder. So what happens is, we know that children who live in a, in a household where substance use is going on have their own experience of how that's impacting them. And when they're identified through the school, typically because they're not flourishing in school, and there's having maybe behavioral problems, or not showing up for school, altriancy, all types of things are going on. And once we do that risk assessment, and again, this, through the Student Assistance Program, nothing is done without parent permission. Once that parent is given permission for us to see them, and we screen that there is substance use in the family, we get them into evidence-based prevention programs, but we also funnel them into our individual treatment providers so that they can get individual care. The issue is, in the last three years, I went from 70, serving 70, to serving over 200. So 2021, you know, 2021 numbers jumped up to 200. That prior year, I was at around 70. In order to continue to provide some resources around this, this is more than I can allocate in resources. We are looking at other curriculum, again, that has proven modules that can help support these children. So it's from fifth to 12th grade that we, and what we're seeing is younger kids. And so we really need to get some materials into the elementary schools, too. It gives us modules from fifth up through 12th grade, that we can actually set up groups instead of the individual therapy groups. If they're in the groups and they're continuing, though, to have issues, we can refer them on then for that individual care that they need, and have that support group in the school for them also. So that's kind of the idea behind that, this curriculum and the modules that they offer. It's a lot, a low cost. It's just a little over $2,000 for the modules. And they will do on, over-the-phone virtual technical assistance for us to help us implement those modules. So we want, again, another, something else in our toolbox, but also that we can build that resource in the schools to help sustain and help kids that are suffering, you know, are presenting with these issues at the, at the school level.
Question.
I do have one question. At the end, it says that you are, you applied and are waiting to hear if it was approved for nonprofits to get trained for free. So is this, you may be able to get it for free, or we do have?
We did find out. I apologize. Since then, we did find out and didn't update that. But we can do this virtually, and they will provide us technical assistance.
But then the cost is for the kids?
Just the kids.
Okay, gotcha.
We'll move that to first, they say.
Pardon me?
We'll move that to first, they say, agenda as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B.
I can take this one. This was one that we've always known that the district attorney has a professional liability insurance, a malpractice insurance. It's often asked, why do they have to have that? Because the office is a 1620 right office, there are certain provisions that our P-Corp insurance and our prior carrier did not cover because the county was not in direct control and of those employees as a 1620 right office. So he does carry an additional line of professional liability insurance, and you can see it outlined in your agenda there for the total amount of $16,691. That is starting in August 1st through the, August 1st, 24. And again, this is just one of those ones that the contracting process that we have implemented in the county has caught not coming through a meeting. So we do want to make sure that that gets taken care of so we can properly pay that bill for the controller.
Any questions from the poll?
No, I would comment that it looks like it's a decrease, which is rare, so that makes us smile up here.
But you gave a lot of All right, then. We'll move on to item P for Department of Emergency Services. And Chris Frederickson is with us via telephone. Chris?
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting approval of the facility agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services and the Blair County Convention Center for use of ballrooms one and two from 3:00 PM on August 2nd to 10:00 PM on August 2nd, 2023, to conduct the county-wide transfer exercise in a total amount of $3,000, which will include meals. $1,440 will be reimbursed for our HNAP grant funds, and the other $1,560 will be paid from the LEPC Hazardous Materials Fund.
Questions for Chris?
How many people attend this event?
Well, it varies every year. Currently, I have 40 people registered to attend. We've had up to 70 in the past.
You've attended it, and it is, does seem to be well-attended.
I did not hear that.
Hi, Chris. It's Amy. I said that I have attended it in the past, and it does seem to be well-attended and well-received.
Yeah, we've been told by the state, by PMA, that it's, our event has been one of the best they've been to.
Well, and certainly, Chris, it's Bruce, when talking about a train derailment, it's certainly a timely, a timely topic and for the exercise, so.
No more questions. We'll just move down.
I'm sorry, heading up a bit.
I said, we'll just move this on then to Thursday's business agenda. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
And item B, Bridge 29. And Paul Shaver.
Requesting approval for the submission of a Chapter 105 Water Obstruction Encroachment General Permit Registration Application to the Commonwealth of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, Bureau of Waterways Engineering and Wetlands for the Scouring Repairs Project to the Blair County Bridge 29 over Spencer Run located in Alliantie Township.
Question needs to come up. Thanks. Thank you, Paul.
You can stay.
Yeah, you are, right. Well, I didn't want to skip.
We are skipping the old business Ballpark Improvement Fund, and as that agreement is not ready, so Paul, you can carry the old business.
Okay, the old business is requesting approval of an easement agreement between the County of Blair and Altoona Water Authority for a newly construction of waterline between Jacksonville, Georgia, or George, I'm sorry, Avenue in the city of Altoona. This is a county-owned property, and it will impact the ARC Recreation Building.
The reason this one held on to the agenda was for Paul to do a site. The reason this one held on to the agenda was for Paul to do a site assessment, as well as walk through with the Water Authority to be sure of what exactly they were digging up and what, what disturbance there was going to be. It was determined that there were some shrubs that were going to be taken out, and they would be placed back with the, with the project. So Solicitor Card did make that change in your agreement that you have today. So this one is ready for action if you want to do it today or Thursday, either way. I'm not sure if it holds up, did Katie say anything on the Water Authority side? So I don't think it holds anything up if you do wait.
Paul, for the call then.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've reached the end of our agenda. We're going to adjourn at this time and thank everyone for their participation in today's meeting.